Well, is that anyone waiting to come in?
Not that I can see, we are recording.
Oh, excellent. Uh, so I will start, I will open the special place like mission meeting for October first twenty twenty four. We'll start with the president allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, one unity, all.
Thank you. We will do our introductions. Uh, Eric Frabig, alternate. Paul Shandley, chair.
Katie Grant, vice chair.
Diane Ryan, commissioner.
Spur Brady, commissioner.
Bill Cuny, alternate.
Excellent. And staff with us this evening?
Wes Comagno, planning director.
Dave McCollum, land agent coordinator.
Amanda Martinez, recording secretary.
Excellent. Thank you. We're gonna jump right back into the public hearing for ECB Realty LLC twenty two Stony Hill Road. Dennis, you have some stuff for us, I hope?
Yes. Good evening for the record, Dennis Frabig is professional engineer with the hotel engineering group. You're on behalf of the applicant who wishes to construct this gas station comedian store on twenty two new Stony Hill Road. First, thank you so much for coming and meeting. A special meeting.
I'm sorry, but thank you. Um, so our task was, was, was pretty, uh, defined as to what we needed to do and get it done in a hurry. Uh, so to that end, you know, as soon as we got back from our meeting last time, um, I had staff modify the truck turning movements, be a little less sloppy and be more succinct with the uh, traveling through the site. Um, if, uh, David, if you want to share the drawings, the turnings, it would be in the, uh, and not in this plan set, but in the, uh, the second, uh, bundle of PDFs that came in the email. So there you go. So in the truck turning plans, the, um, that we analyzed the SU thirty trucks, which is, you know, garbage trucks, delivery trucks, box truck type of, uh, type of vehicle. And, uh, again, we were, we were a little bit more careful with our driving rather than just, you know, click, 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 making it happen. We, you know, I ha- I asked Bill to put on his trucker's hat and, uh, and he did that. He, he drove around the site, uh, with the SU thirty, uh, on this version. And then next, if you can go to the next one, David. That, uh, picks the truck around the opposite, uh, direction, um, shows that it can also, uh, go around the site. And then the last one, David, if you may scroll down, please. That'd be the tanker, uh, that delivers, uh, the fuel. And boy, it's really tough to see here, uh, button, the tanker. If, if you follow, David, can you zoom it up just a bit more, please? And then pull, yep, there you go. So on the initial truck turnings, uh, we had shown the tanker coming into the site and it, no matter what, it comes across this, uh, raised island in the center of the driveway. Um, but now you'll see that the, uh, the tanker, as it turns in, it sticks within the inbound lane and on top of the, uh, the, the mountable curbing, uh, in front. So I mean, the tanker can come in, offload the fuels and circle right back out, uh, without any issues. Um, and we knew we could do it. It's just, you know, a matter of being more cautious with how we, uh, draw things. Um, comment from the engineer also, uh, asked that regarding the canopy height, and I think I explained to the commission, uh, previously that, uh, generally about fourteen feet above the highest, uh, dispenser island is where you place the bottom of the canopy. Um, and you can raise it up even more if you need to. The highest vehicles that are permitted on US roads are thirteen feet, six inches. Uh, so any vehicle that comes in here is gonna clear underneath that canopy. Um, so a, a non-issue, uh, the biggest issue and, and the reason why we, uh, needed to keep open, um, was soil testing. The review engineer requested that we conduct soil tests. Unfortunately, you know, we start off with a, yeah, if you can go back to the site plan set, please. Thank you. So we start off, you scroll to the next sheet, which is the survey. And, uh, you know, we, we start off with an A two survey, um, which, you know, shows topography, shows existing features and so on. Uh, it was a great tool to use as far as where to orient myself and locate myself on the site for conducting these, uh, soil tests. So we conducted a soil test generally in this vicinity, uh, which is on the west side of the proposed building. And then we did, uh, three test holes in, uh, the northern portion of the site and then one more, uh, coming back, uh, towards the home. And we found that the soil in the front and across the back was beautiful. Sandy materials, um, and ran our double ring infiltrometer tests, which are, um, the proper tests now to be utilized based on the DEP stormwater manual, which was just updated in twenty twenty four. Um, so, and this is the, the way that you have to do it. It's no longer old school. It's new school and so it goes. Yes.
Ask you something in regards to that. We've gotten a lot of pushback from, um, engineer, uh, uh, engineering, um, doing these soil tests.
Yep.
Now, prior to, um, uh, making decisions and things like that. In the past, it was something that was always done before, but because of the new manual and the other issues that are associated with it, it's really become a criteria now. Am I correct in that?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, it's, it's i- it's, it's always, you know, makes better sense to do the testing ahead of time, but sometimes because of timing or because of whatever the issues are, um, you can't do it, but and, and fortunately, you know, we went and we did it and thank you for keeping the hearing open for it. And, uh, because the soil tests were so good, we were able to make our systems a little bit smaller, more compact. Um, and I was able to, uh, it was a comment also from, uh, the review engineer about the, um, on the property next door, uh, which the survey and did I do that? The survey indicates that there are two wells on this, uh, property that's located to the north. And, uh, so I, I met with the tenant there and I pushed open the, the covers and one of the, um, that the, the, the well that is a little bit further south is a former well. It's now just concrete rings stacked up with dirt inside of them. Although the dirt is, you know, ten feet down or eight feet down. Um, and the well that's being utilized is directly behind the, uh, existing home. So we made certain to design our septic system still in keeping separation distances, uh, from uh, from the, uh, well next door. Of course, our site will utilize the municipal water that's available to it. Um, sanitary sewer as well. And I think that those were the the, the, the comments that, uh, were outstanding, primarily the soil testing and, and mercifully. So I got two things. Soils were great and at the existing home there, there was an aluminum ladder, like they needed, like they knew I would need it. It's nice of them. The double, double things and it got me out on Saturday morning. So all good stuff. So I, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might ask. Or, um,
So tanker leave on Vale Road? Does it get out on Vale Road?
Yes. Yep. Swings out, comes out under the light, so that it's, uh, fully signalizing. And we will be making modifications to that intersection as part of this, uh, development. So it'll make turning for all vehicles primarily going from Stony Hill into Vale Road. It will make it a nicer transition, less sharp.
Well, trying to figure out, I went up, I, I was looking, you know, trying to figure out people coming from Route six onto the, on the, with, with your exit. If you could see, but that really, I couldn't because of all the shrubbery and stuff that's there. And that's all going to be cleared.
Yes.
So there will be, they'll be much lower. So
It'll be cleared. There's gonna be a sidewalk.
Exactly. So there shouldn't be any problem.
Yep. Should be good. And so, you know, that's another, you know, nice thing about the survey too. And, and I love it when the surveyors, they, they use the, uh, topograph, like a, a, an actual referenced, uh, topographic datum. So that, you know, they refer to the nineteen eighty eight datum in this instance, and we're able to tie in with the datum that is used on the Connecticut website. So now we can kind of extend and we can compare things.
Yeah. I, I, that makes, it made everything much clearer.
Yeah. I think, you know, some, sometimes you get a survey and it has just an assumed datum. And with an assumed datum, you know, it shows things in relation to one another. But I mean, if you're dealing with a property that has, let's say, you know, floodplain or or, or elements that, uh, that, that would other, otherwise impede construction or cause challenges, um, you really need to have um, topography that's tied into something that, uh, that means something.
Yes. Made it much easier.
I'm sorry to battle.
No, that's okay. No, it was good.
My mind spins around. Any other questions or?
Is the final, when the tanker comes in, uh, did you determine if there were cars already parked getting gas? If that's any problem?
Yeah, well, not an issue because the tanker, as it would come in, um, would, would we have it coming in, uh, up Stony Hill Road and then taking a left turn in. And as it turns in, we have the whole, um, drive aisle beyond the canopy. So there's no vehicles parked within that drive aisle. And then, you know, the tanker can drop its load, uh, into the, uh, underground storage tanks as they are proposed. So all, all works out nicely.
Staff has no further questions on the application. Um, except to say that, um, uh, the revised drawings were reviewed by, uh, SLR engineering. And their comments have been fully addressed at this time.
Anyone else? On board, any questions? Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing. I'm good.
Um, there's one question I think we went over. Actually, remind me, the bordering the neighbor here, is there, um, like screening going in?
Uh, there, there are existing trees and if I may, yeah, and we're proposing a, uh, a solid.
That's what I thought. It's one of the
And, and there, and there will be some bushes and
That's exactly what I thought. I just brain farted. So, no, um, uh, I think it's, uh, you addressed all the, all a lot of concerns. If there's nothing else, then, uh,
I just have one other question. Um, one meeting, I think the owner said that the plan was to be open from five AM to one AM. Is that correct?
I wish you were here.
I don't remember.
I do, I do remember. I, it was on, on the twenty fourth, tenth of September that they were talking about. I think it was the tenth, maybe.
Yeah. So I, I, I
Can we have any stay on that? The hours? I mean, I don't know what the hours are of other things on, on Route six. You know, the other gas stations that have. I know that, you know, they're also gonna be, seven eleven is open all night. So I guess they're also repeating against them. So
If I recall, we don't have anything in the regulations that govern Route six hours. The only time, the only instance I recall is with Target and that was a court case.
Yeah.
And the target's hours were established by a court case.
Yep. It's in there.
But I can't let them, no, I, I can't enforce that. I'll tell you right now. Unless it's court order. I did it with Target, but I can't, you know, there's no hours of operation, like an excavation film permit, things like that. There, there's no restriction on Route six quarter.
And you're okay with the lighting situation that they've given?
Um, the lighting, uh, we did review. I am okay with the lighting. Yes.
I, I, I think, uh, there was some mention of, uh, you know, controlling some sort of, you know, noise or music at some point too, as far as when the gas, gas station is open.
When the, um, usually what happens is, uh, Bob, is when they come in with their, uh, site plan for construction, those things and the sign itself is usually left to staff and it tends to be an argument with the, not with the owner of the gas station itself, but the, uh, let's say it's a Shell or a Sicko or something like that. Um, because in Bethel, we do not allow for that type of, uh, pump.
Yeah, I think the LED lighting on the, for the ID, I think is not permitted.
Correct.
Um, so it would have to be something similar to
What we have. Henny Penny's been in several terms. They wanna get rid of the, the sign and put in an LED thing. And we just keep, you know, we just tell her no. That's how it works.
You mean Henny Penny, you mean Chestnut Market?
Yep, uh, the thing out with the gas station on Route six by, uh, uh, Alenda.
The barnyard.
Barnyard.
Was that wheels, right?
Penny Penny.
Henny Penny. Yeah, I think Henny Penny's approved, Mark. And I think, you know, nicely with the new application, the, uh, the drive-through element is no longer part of it. So you're not gonna have the, the speaker sound. Although, believe it or not, we did a sound analysis a long time ago, uh, speakers and drive-throughs and
Oh, really?
Yeah. And the, the sound tends to not carry as far as, as it would seem. But
Traffic wise, um, is it only a right turn onto Stony Hill?
Yes.
So
Yeah, we did that.
Is there gonna be something that, so people are gonna go out the other way onto Vale to make a left?
Correct. Correct. If you, if you wanna take a left, you have to go out under the light. Which makes it a, a lot better organization on the site for turning. All right. Any else? Well, if that's it, uh, then this hearing is closed.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, folks. Uh, thanks for having a special meeting for me.
No problem. No, you're not the only one.
Okay, we're gonna move right into our second one. Bethel thirty two Henry LLC, thirty two Henry Street.
Mark, you have anything for us?
Yep. I got the answer from the state.
Oh, excellent.
Oh, that was good.
Um, there's just a slight concern about trucks carrying now. I replied to him today, cuz, uh, on the plan, um, there's trucks, you know, like, uh, pace, all those comic carriers are in and out every day of the access of buildings just beyond where we're gonna be. So that, that's not a concern. Um, I believe so. Um, and I think Steve, uh, Trinkus addressed the other issues in his comments. I don't know if David has.
What was that? I didn't get anything.
So Mister, Mister Trinkus, uh, submitted, uh, uh, let's see. Well, he just submitted a plan and stormwater report at seven nineteen to my inbox. And I have response comments from him that came in at five fifty-two this afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
There's quite a few comments.
I, I, I apologize.
I, I can put those up on the screen if you would like.
All right, the last meeting?
I know.
But it's, it's my understanding that you did the special meeting because you wanted to get some work done prior to us getting into other matters. So was it made clear what was needed?
Well, he, he, Steve addressed the topographical issues and then there was, uh, uh, soil testing to be done, which I dug the net in the following day.
Okay.
Uh, that Steve came and did the work and told me, go ahead, fill it back in. Um, there was a question about the, the drain, because SLR was on the property on the twenty-third.
Uh huh.
I didn't know he was there.
We, okay, but when we, when you have an application like in front of the commission?
Yeah.
Like, I've been out there. I go out.
Okay.
A lot of times on my site plans and on my job sites, I'll go out in the weekend because I don't wanna bother anybody with it in the day. So I mean, is there a question about us being allowed on the property?
No.
Oh, okay.
He was asking about
I'm sorry. I thought you were gonna go there.
Well, I observed him on the camera, so the the storm drainage question underneath the building, he never looked in. He looked at the one in front of the self-storage unit. And he looked at the one in the center of the property adjacent to the road. And his question was about the pipes.
Okay.
And I sent David, uh, a plan, a print, old print that I had that showed the pipes and the directions that they run through the culvert that runs along the property of the self-storage and thirty-two Henry Street.
All right.
Um, so, so we addressed that as well.
What about the ADA?
The ADA, I thought we settled that at the last meeting, would be a building department, a building department issue.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, do a couple of things.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm confused. Again, I apologize for not being in the last meeting, but from the comments that engineering. Okay, so you addressed the ADA comments at the last meeting, aren't?
Yeah, that
How'd you do that?
We, well, we came to the conclusion that we, uh, we would address that with the building department. And we have no objection to, uh, putting an ADA ramp in there. That's, um, a simple thing.
Okay. And I think we send
All right. So I'm gonna pass these out and, and let's get this squared away right now.
Yeah.
So we know exactly what's going on. Um, first of all, we didn't receive anything till tonight. So that means, again, you're gonna have, we're gonna have to ask for an extension. Right?
Yeah.
And the extension's gonna have to go to the second meeting in October, because our next meeting has been thoroughly planned out for your work as planners. So in regards to, um, uh, what, what's all this back and forth, you know, I'm getting tired of it. Um, the, uh, so all right, so on the twenty, on the nineteenth, Steve, and a- again, I, I haven't been that involved. Steve uh, gave some responses. He was responded back to by Todd. So on Thursday, he submitted something or did something. On Monday, the twenty-third, Todd responded. So that was the twenty-third. And we haven't received anything till tonight. Am I correct?
Uh, correct.
Right.
Okay. I, I just, I, I just don't want the town, the board to feel that the town's responsible for their lack of um, courtesy in giving the applicant or giving Steve an extent, you know, that this special meeting, they don't do this. They do this out of kindness of their heart.
Right. I wasn't aware the email, uh, came, uh, that late that, that you guys
I'm looking at, okay, so I'm looking at, um, his engineering report and I also, I'll give you a copy of this. And, um, it's, I highlighted the areas that have not been addressed in regards to this application.
Right.
Um, when you target, I, again, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but you, the commission is agreeable for the ADA accessibility to be addressed by the building department.
Just said that. Well, he just said they have no problem putting it on.
And we
But it's not on.
Right. So I, I, I think the part that's trying to be made is that if, is if there is going to be a handicap ramp, it should be shown on the plans.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You wanna let that go to the building, let it go to the building. To me, that's not a big deal. I can, my problem, the other problem that you had was easement?
Yes, the easement, which he just brought me this email from the state. You guys see that?
And that's in regards to?
Uh, this reads to me like Right away.
Oh, okay. And who is this from?
That's from the railroad guy at the state DOT.
Okay. And he says?
If you read through it, it's a bunch of lingo, but it's basis is they, they're okay with it. I just read it.
Okay, they're okay with the easement?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna need to contact him. Only because this is, this is nice to have this email.
Okay, so you need a
But I'm dealing with, I'm dealing with easements in regards to seventy-seven South Street.
Okay.
And, and also with forty-two Plum Trees Road and the state of Connecticut over minor little things and it's taking months.
Oh, you
Do you have a connection there?
Uh, well, it took me almost a month and a half to get that.
Because you have a connection if you're getting something like this.
So you need a le- a, a letter.
Let me talk to this guy. Because I need to know where he's from.
Well, yeah, good luck.
Yeah, wow.
Because I went through the gal on there like four times and finally, uh, three emails.
Don't get me wrong, I'm very impressed.
He finally responded to me, uh, with and basically they wanna just be sure they can get trucks and trailers in, which my response is not on there. That the building beyond where we're setting up, warehouse, gets trucks and trailers on a daily basis. So it's not an issue as far as
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just spend, I don't wanna keep everybody tied up now since I know that we're not going anywhere this evening, but I just wanna get a couple of clarifications or something. All right. So we take care of that. My biggest concern right now is the floodplain.
Nice.
And the drainage and the FEMA, you know, it, it's
Steve dra- addressed that in the last meeting with the new drawings. He, uh,
But I have the, I have SLR's comments regards to this.
That was after.
He highlighted these areas saying that they haven't been addressed.
Uh, Steve's addressed them at the meeting, last meeting.
Well, would have paid.
So, well, I paid for all new drawings.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, David.
I, i- is it worth, uh, having the responses Mr. Trinkus submitted, uh, shortly before this meeting? Uh, reading those aloud so that there can be some clarification on what was and what has not been addressed?
I disagree, David.
Okay.
And the reason for that is Mr. Trinkus is not here.
Okay.
I'm not comfortable with making the determination if something is addressed or not.
Understood.
I leave it to the board and I leave it to our consulting engineer to say it's addressed or it's not addressed.
Understood.
Say, I'm sorry to disagree with you.
Didn't, uh, get submitted to, to Dave, but I, it never got put on the Google Drive.
No, right, right. Because the responses were received at, at five, uh, five fifty-two PM this evening, Diane.
I'm talking about the, um, plan that he showed on the, on the table here. And we only, we didn't all see it too well. It was one plan. And then he gave that copy to Dave.
Oh, I don't know about that.
Yeah, he submitted all new, uh, site plan in the last meeting. He did go over last meeting about, um, the actual elevation of the, of the property not being in a floodplain. It was good by a few feet, or not good, whatever you wanna say. It was out of the floodplain by a few feet.
And how was that determination made? Was it, was it?
With New England. He used a, the New England land surveyor.
Okay. And did we get a copy of that?
I believe he showed one. That's
I think the site plan?
Of that.
I'm talking about the survey.
No.
Uh, David, do, do we have a copy of the survey in the?
Uh, the, the, the survey that was, the survey that was submitted, uh, at the last meeting, that was only a stamped and sealed copy of the survey that was submitted as part of the regular, regular app, or the original application. To my knowledge, it is not T two cert, T two certified.
Well, when you're dealing with them, you gotta have a T two.
It was, uh, it was, there, there was changes made on it.
Okay, good.
So, so let me understand. I need a whole separate survey?
Hold on. Okay. So, so it's my understanding Steve has submitted some stuff tonight, right?
Well, he made comments to the engineer, yeah.
Okay, good. So we have those and David has those by email?
Yes.
Is that what you got, David? Or you have revised drawings or?
So I, so I have responses, uh, response comments to Todd Ritchie's, uh, response comments, which I have up here on my screen. And then there were also, if, if I can find where they are. Um, bidet plan report will be sent by separate email. There's also, uh, this revised stormwater management, uh, um, uh, this revised stormwater management system calculations as well as a revised, uh, this appears to be a revised site plan.
Anything for Todd Ritchie saying that he agreed with Trinkus on this?
Okay. So, so I think the point I'm trying to make and I, and I I, I'm sorry, our
No, don't, don't be sorry. I'm just
You know, I just don't wanna keep everybody here. My suggestion is, is that, um, we request from you to give us a thirty-day extension on closing the public hearings. I'm sorry.
That's what it is. I just hope these two engineers get together.
Well, that's part of my job.
Yeah.
And I will make sure that Todd receives all this information that Steve sent this evening. If I got it before, I could have sent it to
I, I, I understand.
I could have had, you know, but anyways, I could have shit a water, but I can't.
Well, I got one thing done today.
So, um,
Not that I wanna waste anybody's time, but I just
Okay. No, that was, that was a good thing. But anyways, um, so you're granting a subverbal extension for thirty days?
Whatever you say.
All right. And, uh, I will, um, keep in contact with Todd Ritchie and Mr. Trinkus and see where this goes before your next and Mr. Trinkus and see where this goes before your next.
As I, as I look at this, Art, you got more than, you got more than one thing done today, um, you're knocking on the door of almost everything. Um, because you just gotta get the semantics of your survey squared away. You you might already have your T two certified one and not even know it, correct? Uh, Beth?
Uh, yeah.
If it was done by a reputable surveyor.
I got, I got two things going on here. I have an engineered drawing that's based on a survey done by New England Land Surveying. And then a portion of that is referring to a Rowan somebody, something.
So.
As another, I mean, there's, I it doesn't make any sense to me and it's very difficult to understand.
I know, uh, with the the information coming in, they did not help, um. I I just, I think, I think you're just, I think you're a good spot, or you're gonna, unfortunately, get pushed off, um, and continued, but you get your survey squared away. Um, you got the email for the easement, so as long as, uh, by the next meeting, we get that squared away, which would sound like we're knocking on the door of that. Uh, the ADA stuff, uh, is is at this point not an issue, if you're agreeing to it, um.
This is for the October twenty-second meeting.
The biggest, the biggest issue is is item number eight.
Uh huh.
Dealing with the drainage system?
Yeah.
And the elevator is associated with that? I'm sorry.
No, I'm.
I thought you were done.
No, no, we just haven't, let's address that too, to see exactly what we need, what do, what do we need on that?
What about the drainage system, so I understand?
Well, the drainage system is, when you're dealing with the elevations, the the way you have the the Mr. Trinkus has the detention system.
Right.
Um, based out, when you look at the discharge point of the detention system, the pipe that it's going into is catch basin. We haven't had rain since the August eighteenth, and there was, uh, there was a a large amount of water within the catch basin. So, the pipe was at a different elevation, so what is gonna happen is, instead of draining into the catch basin, the catch basin is gonna drain into the detention system.
Right. Well, the the pipe hasn't been installed into the.
I understand.
Uh, so, well, the other thing is.
We can only use the.
Maybe in the meantime, I'll have the the storm drain cleaned out, because that could be a possibility why there's a water retained in.
And I, um, so anyways, I'm gonna refer you to our engineering report, item number eight, and whatever Steve's response is, which I don't know at this point. Alright.
Just on this one.
Alright, so our next meeting is, Ms. Amanda?
Twenty-second?
October twenty-second.
October twenty-second.
Art has copied this, right?
Yeah, that's from.
No, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, I have a copy. I just, um, I just want to make sure that what I've accomplished and what I need to push the battle on.
Okay.
So, it's a drainage system.
I think, uh, speaking of staff, anyone else can speak, but it's in, and and to receive a comfort level on the site plan that's proposed, um, we need to look a little bit closer at the drainage system and how it's gonna work. And also being the, um, the flood manager for the town of Bethel, the elevations in regard to the FEMA and regard to the, um, how the determination was made of where the floodplain is in in relationship to whatever's going on. And again, I wasn't gonna get involved in this to this degree, but because of the, um, aspects of the plan that the engineers brought to my attention, we just have to cover a few more of our bases.
Okay.
Okay, and what I, what I would suggest, Art, is that you talk to me.
You have to call tomorrow.
No. No, no.
Well, let's, let's put it this way, you can reach me anytime, and I'll be right here.
And it, I, and as a matter of fact, what I would rather do, I'll meet you over there. Alright.
Yeah, anytime, just call me.
Maybe Friday. I will, I'll just call you.
Yeah, because.
You know, we'll do it sooner rather than later, but we have a couple of weeks, so I mean, it's not gonna be right away.
No, I just wanna get on the.
I just want to, and I'm on the same page, you know.
You know, it's just, I'm just trying, because it's all new to me, it's just like right now.
Yeah.
I mean, where where do we draw the line on some things? I understand, I want to do it right.
And you are.
Hence why I came to the town to do it right. It just, it it just, every time, it's just something else, something else, something else.
Yeah.
At times, don't you be an expert and never have to do it again?
Well, not the owners, see that, see that, they're gonna be wanting me to build something else.
But you'll be so good at this, you'll sell for it.
Yeah, I'm gonna be sending you all Christmas cards.
It does, it does seem like you have a bunch of stuff on the, on the, on the one yard line here and you just gotta find it, so. Uh, I recommend just get with Beth over the next couple of weeks.
She likes baseball, no?
Don't be like the Giants or the Jets.
I'm a big Jet fan, so.
I'm a big Giants, I'm like.
So anyways, seriously, just get with her over the next week or two, or three weeks, whatever you gotta do. Let's try to get all these D, the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Because we're at the bottom of the ninth.
Okay, game is on the line.
And hopefully, we can.
So this is a question, once, once we get the approval, say we decide not to do anything this year, what what?
You're good.
Time frame?
Good, you got five years.
Okay.
Resets in January.
Yeah, because I was hoping I was digging by now and pouring concrete, but.
Oh, sure.
Anyway.
We'll see.
Alright, so.
It's supposed to be a nice winter, so, or you will.
I hope so. But we're continuing this hearing, um.
It was twenty-second.
To the meeting. Twenty-second. Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Art.
Well, thank you very much for all your time. I really appreciate it.
Probably I'm not wasting it. No, you're not, you're not. We're here for it, hope you.
You have a couple of weeks, but don't wait till the last minute.
A matter of fact, whatever she's ready, I'm there. I'm only right around the corner.
Always, always, always there. He's always ready.
Yeah.
So, artist.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You too. I'm gonna work, move into our work session, and I'm gonna see Eric for Mike Kozlowski and Doug for Ken Parsons. Um, and we're gonna work, go right into ECB Realty LLC, twenty-two Stony Hill Road, site plan and special permit. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
I think pretty much everything I had to put out is now. They straightened it out and showed it, I think. I can't think of anything else that I hadn't learned.
I think it's developed nicely. Like, I think the the improvements through the discussions and everything.
And they've worked with us very nicely, too.
Yep, yep. I would agree.
At the request of the chairman, I did put something together and as an indication that you may want to go along with this. And I did listen to the hearing and I didn't think there was anything. I wanted you to have the meeting to mean something.
I mean, it did, I think we learned a lot from.
Wanted to be a discussion. And Bob, I apologize for not sending this to you, but just because of your experience and and how these things have gone in the past, I just wanted to share with you, the biggest, the only thing that really struck me was if they, you know, with the canopies and the gas stations and sometimes they want to come in and change it and put lights on it or make it bigger or make it more modern-looking and things of that nature. So I said if there was any change in that, that they would have to come back to the planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
Okay, everything else is correct. Andrew.
Hey, Beth, doesn't the shell downtown have digital, like, displays on their pumps? Or am I mistaken?
It's too late.
I haven't been there.
And I go there for gas all the time.
Yeah.
I thought they had like little TV screens and stuff out there.
They did, wouldn't they, for still?
They're not anymore.
Not that I'm aware of.
Gotcha.
So, you ready?
So, everybody got a chance to review?
Yeah. Okay, right ahead, you go right ahead.
Uh, I'll make motion to approve a site plan for a new thirty-one hundred and six square foot building, a gas station, a convenience store, the cannibal, a property located in twenty-two Stony Hill Road, accessory map seventy-one, block one oh nine, block zero one, owned by ECB Realty LLC, subjected to the following stipulations. One, unless modified herein, the project shall be constructed in accordance with plans entitled proposed gas station, twenty-two Stony Hill Road, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared by Dan, Danis Verbikis, P E of Artel Engineering Corp. LLC, dated June three, twenty fourteen, and revised on October first, twenty twenty-four. Unless modified herein, the building shall be, two, I'm sorry, unless modified herein, the building shall be constructed in accordance with plans entitled proposed exterior elevation Bethel CT twenty-two Stony Hill Road, dated seven sixteen twenty-four, by Ruslan Dawson, Incorporated Architect, three. The cannibal shall be constructed in accordance with plan entitled Cannibal Sketch, Gas Station twenty-two Stony Hill Road, Bethel, Connecticut, prepared by Danis Verbikis, P E of Artel Engineering Group LLC, dated June three, twenty fourteen, and revised on July three, twenty fourteen. Any proposed, or is it revisions shall be reviewed by commission prior to the initiation of the building permit. Number four, the commission acknowledges a variance in the zoning board appeals granted in November nineteenth, twenty thirteen, and a certificate of location for a gas station dated May twenty eighth, twenty fourteen. Number five, the commission acknowledges an approval from the public utilities commission dated March fourth, twenty twenty-four. Number six, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, the applicant shall obtain permit for steward connection. Number seven, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, beginning construction, the applicant shall submit a final approval for curb cut modifications, road widening and signal modifications from the Connecticut Department of Transportation. Number eight, prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, the applicant's engineer shall submit a bond for items including erosion and sediment controls. Drainage improvements and landscaping estimate shall be reviewed and approved by the town engineer and posted with the town prior to the commencement of construction. Number nine, prior, the prior to the initiation of any construction on the site, all erosion and sediment control measures shall be installed according to notes on the drawings and in performance of the two thousand and two CT guidelines for soil erosion sediment control. ENS measures shall be maintained throughout the construction process and until the site is fully stabilized. The commission and/or designated agent may require additional ENS measures as needed throughout the construction. Number ten, all utilities shall be placed underground. Eleven, a final A two as-built survey is required prior to issuance of certificate of zoning compliance for occupancy. Number twelve, construction improvement shall commence within one year and be completed within five years of date of this approval. Reason, granting this approval, the planning and zoning commission states that the proposed project is in substantial performance of the zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development of the town of Bethel, and that the project will not have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties or on the development surrounding district. Sincerely, Paul Stanley Chair, Bethel Planning and Navigation.
A second.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Ignard?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes. Okay.
Yes. No.
Yes, I have a question. Is it too late for a question?
Uh, we're in the middle of a vote.
Yeah.
Let's take the final roll.
I can discuss it after.
Yeah. Your vote?
Yes.
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 And I am a yes. Uh, you got a question?
Yeah, just logistically. So it says, construction improvement shall commence within a year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so they start and then we have five years where this thing could sit semi-constructed. Is that standard?
Pretty standard.
And it's happened before.
Yeah.
There's a statute regarding that. Um, over the years, uh, twice I've seen it expanded. Once was during, um, two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, when the economy tanked and we were in the recession. They, uh, the state extended site plans for ten years or ten to fifteen years.
Really, yeah.
And then during COVID, they did the same thing again during COVID, they did an extension, so they took whatever, if the town's thing was for five years, they extended them out, I think, for another ten to fifteen years.
Well, that being said, the motion passes. Six point one. Got them, Amanda?
Yeah, I got it.
Excellent. Um, so we cannot move to the work session, so that will be struck from group agenda. And with that.
Uh, I just have one thing to add, Amanda. Um, I couldn't listen to the video, but I went through everything online and I went through the minutes for the twenty-four meeting. Um, I probably still have to be up to me on the, on what was going on.
Okay.
Just be a record.
Alright, and with that.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, can I just, uh?
Sure.
Make one, one comment in regards to who was, uh, we were missing members tonight?
Mm-hmm.
So when the vote was taken?
Yep.
Did you seat somebody for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention, I apologize.
For the record, at the start of the work session, I say Eric for Mike Kozlowski.
Thank you.
And Doug for Kenny Parsons.
Yeah, I got that too.
Yep.
I dotted across, I was.
I got it.
Somewhere else.
And with that, I close this public meeting. We're closed.
Motion to.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Motion passes.
Okay.
Say you're nice.